It is now six o'clock. I will call this regular city council meeting on March 24th. The Lord will arise. I will call please in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the beautiful weather. We thank you for all your many blessings. Help us as we move through tonight's agenda. Give us wisdom to do what's right for the city. Be with our country and be with the world and our community and everybody that's sick and scared. Please bring comfort to everyone and let this virus epidemic pass so that we can get back to life as usual. And Lord, let us do your will. Praise and amen. Pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us tonight. This time we will have citizen comments. Janine, is anybody registered?
No, sir.
Mitch, is there any introduction of new employees?
No.
Next, we will consider an approved minutes from the February 27 regular meeting. If there are no additions or corrections, can I get a motion to approve those minutes as read?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as read.
Second. Motion's been made by Ken, seconded by Michael. That we approve the minutes as read. All in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carried. Next, we will consider an approved monthly departmental reports. If you have a question, please identify the page number.
Good. Just on page fourteen. I had a curiosity. I saw that we had a dumpster fire on Wayland Hennings.
On Wayland Hennings, yeah.
Do you know what started that? Was it by accident or?
I'm sure somebody threw a cigarette in there or something. I haven't really looked at that one, but they kind of, they just happened here and there and, you know.
I was just curious. I didn't know if it was.
Been there or lied on purpose, you know.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious.
I don't know. Lot of details on that. Chief was there.
I have a comment on page forty-one. Under Department 613 shared costs, again Matthews, there's an amount for $8,316.54. Says for Matthews prosecuting attorney, Ben Warren and Al Olmsted, or A Olmsted. Don't believe Al Olmsted is actually prosecuting that. But also that I knew that the council disallowed that payment based on our charter because under the City Attorney Section 3.01, we did not approve that attorney to be used to prosecute in representing the city of Littlefield. And that is Section 3.01, City Attorney where it states the city council shall appoint an attorney licensed by the state of Texas to be the city attorney. The city attorney shall be established by a station of services as established by the council and shall serve at the pleasure of the council. The city attorney or other attorney selected by the city attorney with the approval of the council shall represent the city in all litigation. The city attorney shall be the legal advisor of the city and counsel of the city in all its officers and departments in the conduct of the city business. Was Ms. Matthews approved by this council for prosecution by the city of Littlefield?
Brian, can you hear that?
I could not hear that. If you could just repeat it, I guess.
He wants to disallow Matthews, Janath Matthews, for the prosecution of the case with Ben Warren back last year because of the charter and not appointing him as a council as our city attorney.
You can make that motion, but you can proceed as normal.
And for further, for further reference, because the judge of the municipal court, Section 3.03, I haven't seen any bills from the judge who presided over that case, but municipal court shall be presided over by a judge who shall be known as the judge of the municipal court. He shall be qualified voter of the city of Littlefield and shall be appointed by the majority vote of the council for a definite period of time, not less than two years, et cetera, et cetera. Let me get to the point. It says here the city council by ordinance may provide for the appointment, by ordinance may provide for the appointment of one or more judges to serve if the regular judge, the presiding judge or an associate judge is temporarily unable to act. And so in that instance, we don't believe the city council approved presiding judge in that case as well. So I believe that any payment from that should be disallowed as well. But I don't, I don't know if that payment's come through. I haven't noticed it.
It was a unique situation with having to go to court with a city council member. So everybody that was hired by the council had to recuse theirself, but there was lots of loggers that looked at all of that and made that recommendation. So we hear your points. I wish Brian could hear them better. But Brian, do you see any issue with us moving forward?
No, I don't. It's due to the notice by this board, but you can proceed.
Very good. Buddy, hear his legal recommendation?
So that third debate, correct?
So is it this council's general rule to go against the charter of the city of Littlefield?
No, sir. I don't know what their premise was with backing that up. If there's attorney general deals. Brian, is there, I guess he needs further explanation on why that was allowed?
Well, we can, we can look at it more right now. Mr. Warren, I don't have any of those documents in front of me to give you any more information than what I've already said. But I know we all looked at it and didn't find any issues with it.
You didn't find any issues with it?
Did not.
Did you read the charter?
I'm not going to argue with you.
I ask you a simple question. Did you read the charter?
Yes, I looked at the charter.
So you didn't, you didn't read, you didn't hear the part where I said that the city council had to approve the attorney that represents the city of Littlefield? That's Section 3.01. So what do you have to say about that?
Well, nothing else I did back, so.
So did you make the motion, Ben?
I made a motion to disallow that, yes.
Motion's been made by Ben to disallow that payment, which I think has been cut already. So if there's not a second, the motion dies to the last of a second. Any other questions?
Just a quick comment. There's no page number. Just something that I've kind of noticed. And I'm pretty sure Mitch and his department, Streets and Parks are probably aware of. I mean, it's been getting a lot of rain. I think we need to start mowing some parks and maybe some lots and even be cleaned up before they can really get out and happen. These next few days are going to be real nice. It could be a wise decision to try to get ahead, especially the parks. They've kind of overgrown a little bit. I mean, I don't know what the department's either behind or what the situation is. We can give them to start mowing. Probably be wise to start doing that.
Any other questions on the monthly departmental reports?
In our last meeting, Mitch Braden just mentioned that he would clean up the graffiti that had been around town. What's the status on that?
We've gotten most, I think, pretty much all of the stuff that's ours except for the, got a lot of dumpsters to paint over. So we're working on the most visible ones first. And then there are a lot of mucked down alleys that we'll have to repaint. But they've covered a lot of them. And there's still a couple of them I've seen that we need to get to. Good progress on that, I think, of course.
Yeah, because some parks have been cleaned up. So we've got a weed problem.
Yeah, they've been spraying. So I don't know if.
You know, and on the tagging, on the tagging, even citizens try to cover up what's been down, made down the alley. But I mean, as soon as they cover it up, it gets re-tagged again.
Chief, doesn't seem like it slowed down on the tagging?
Yes, sir.
I haven't seen there much around town, so.
Yeah, ever since we got that one person named and he knows it, everything has slowed down, which I think is astronomical coincidence.
An HMD thing is everywhere. I see it a lot. Just, I don't know what that works out.
Any other questions on the monthly departmental reports?
On what Ben brought up, is that just died now or nothing further going to be looked into or?
Brian, you're going to research Ben's questions tomorrow, tomorrow? Is that the plan? You're muted. Okay. Guess I'll check into it. Give us an answer. Any other questions on the departmental report?
Make a motion to approve the departmental reports.
I make a seconded. But I'd like to see what happens without kind of what Ben brought up.
And motion's been made and seconded. Another councilman just asked that we find that legal answer for that, Ben's question. Motion's been made by Michael, seconded by Buddy, that we approve the monthly departmental reports. If there's no further questions, all in favor say aye. All opposed?
Actually, I'll say aye with my exception that I didn't know it. I don't know how to do that. That's kind of wrong.
I'm sure. I'll just write it down.
I agree with the rest of it except for the one that I disagreed with.
Got that noted, Janine?
Yes, sir.
The motion carried. Next, we will consider an approved ordinance of the city of Littlefield, Texas adopting Amendment Number One to the original budget of the city of Littlefield, Texas for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Funding accounts and budget due to unforeseen situations contain findings probably provided for surrogability and provided for other details related to the subject. Mitch?
This is basically just a formality. These budget amendments have already been approved in earlier meetings this year. So this is just an ordinance to, to, I feel like it's necessary to amend the budget in the same manner as it is adopted. So this is something we'll be doing going forward on budget amendments, probably a couple of times a year to just pick up those items that, that you were going to amend the budget like during the regular meetings.
You entertain a motion to approve these previously approved budget amendments in this resolution?
Well, can we, we have the budget amendments, but we don't have what it does to the overall budget. Kind of have to have that to be able to approve amendments, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it would help us to determine what we're going to be up in the end of the day.
I could, you know, if you really have to have that, we can bring it up at another meeting.
Well, how much are we, right now, how much do we have net in our budget?
Oh, we're quite a bit ahead on the budget front end, or you're not here, but that $48,000 does cause a problem as far as the forecast or where we're at right now on the budget.
But the $48,000 is just for the landfill, correct?
Yeah.
Coming out of, just pulled cash. So is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Can I ask a quick question before we do that? Can, when we, when we do these budget amendments, can we have the resolution at that time? Instead of, I mean, that way we know what, I mean, like this was done, I don't know when we did the budget amendment for the landfill.
Yeah.
I think it was like four months ago maybe?
Yeah, part of this is a recommendation by the auditors to try to ratify it. In the past, they've always been voting on it in the minutes. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, it's, it's, we'll, going forward, I think probably it would be the best to have a ordinance for that.
Yeah, I think Mr. Warren, right. I mean, we need to know what it's going to have on the budget and see some numbers as far as.
Obviously, we've approved this, yes. So we knew at that point, but it'd be nice to have a re-race or as where we are right now.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Going forward, we'll do it that way. We'll show the bottom line.
Okay. I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve ordinance 2020-0324-1. Is that the number one?
Wait a second.
How seconded that motion?
Motion's been made by Ben, seconded by Buddy, that we approve this ordinance, amending the budget. There's no further discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carried. Next, we will consider an approved tax deed for trust properties in the city of Littlefield from Texas Community Groups. Property 19651 on 109 Dallas Avenue, property 20303 at 715 Phelps Avenue, property 17564 at 217 Cole Street, property 19348 at 1202 Griffin. Pretty much what we've had in the past. Mitch, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I think we checked these bitters out. There's no, them not in debt to us or anything like that. Now, there's one piece of property here. I think we may have discussed this a while back, that 715 Phelps. I don't know. I mean, I don't know if that's what that vacant lot, you know, it's in a pretty important spot there right on Phelps Street. I don't know if that, I mean, we could pass and maybe try to sell it in another manner or something. Ben was $900 and something dollars for it. But then again, I don't know. It may not get anybody else interested. I mean, that's just one that kind of jumps out at me. The rest of them are just some scattered vacant lots or anything. But.
Can you tell us what that's by, it's south of the courthouse, correct?
Yeah, it's right there between, it's the old, right behind the EPS building that we cleaned up a while back.
They're only paying us $55 for it.
Well, that one though.
Well, that's their praise value on the tax roll. D is $55.
I agree on that. We could hold off on that one and maybe try to sell it some other way to maybe get the money for it. Or, you know, I kind of, we think maybe those businesses might want to look at having that beside them. But that would be my recommendation that we might pass on selling that one, 715 Phelps.
I agree with that. These little bid amounts, do they cover the back taxes on these properties?
It's all done through the, through the, you go through the sheriff sale process and, you know, you don't get a bid from any of these properties that are up with the value of the, the tax value of the property. Then they're struck off to the city. And at that point, the back taxes are waived. So all that money that we get from selling these properties, the county and the school district have both agreed to let us keep all of the money instead of that portion. Most places when you sell a piece of property, that all you get is, is a pro rata portion of your tax rate compared to the other entities. In other words, normally we would get 20 bucks out of that 50 or something like that. But the school had laid that over to us. But to answer your question, the tax, the back taxes go away when you have a tax sale.
Sure.
For sure.
I agree on allowing Phelps. I'd like to see us no more than bring and hold off and see if we can find a better use for it because it is on the main road. But I'd sure like to see somebody use it to keep it clean and do something with it.
Can we not put an amendment bid on that or it comes through the sheriff's office?
The legal process is it's a sealed bid. And so the high bid and a sealed bid process.
Even though it's a sealed bid, we don't have amendment law on that?
I don't think we can do that. If I remember, I asked him about that and I would think that, that that is a, they either really discouraged it or, I mean, our goal on this thing is to get these back on the tax roll. I mean, they're not, most of the time these lots are not very desirable. They're hard to even know where they're exactly at really in a lot of cases when they're in the middle of a whole block of vacant properties. Typically, we do get a little more money than what it was bid on these. But, I mean, it just, it's up and down. And a lot of people wanted to pay 50 bucks hardly for a, for a vacant lot, you know, that's in a, not very usable, you know.
It's been a good process to get them back in the hands of taxpayers that keep up with them and keep them clean. But, you know, in situations like this, if you come across something that could be desirable, cities have the ability to list properties. In this situation, there's four other entities, two other entities involved. But, you know, we could give a local realtor and put it up for sale if anybody would want to mess with a $200 lots, the trouble with that kind of stuff.
Is there a possibility that we could get an agreement with the appraisal district to reevaluate the value of these properties before we put them up for sale to see if they could actually be increased in the tax value? So that when somebody were to buy, let's say like one of these was valued at $200, let's say they valued it at $2,000 because it's a pretty big lot. It's lot five, lot five, you know, reevaluate it for $2,000 and they buy it for, I think this one was what, $150?
Sitting up on the sheriff's sale a little bit, if we just picked out an individual lot and went to the chief appraisers that, you know, this may be, should be worth more money or something like that. But that's only at the sheriff's sale.
Right, right.
These can sell at the sheriff's sale.
But when we get, we have the property in the limbo stage, go to them and say, is there a way that they could reevaluate at that point? And because it's going to go to sheriff's sale and it might bring, it might bring it to a sale, might not. But then when it goes to the closed bid thing, you know, the person's going to get a more valuable property based on the appraisal district's stuff and it might help our situation a little bit.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. But in the process, I really don't think that's going to help because these people are not even paying the bottom value at the sheriff's sale. So they all get struck off to us. Now, after they get struck off to us, I can maybe visit with Texas CG and see if we can, if maybe, if there's a way to put a minimum along.
That's what I'm saying is if we can go to the appraisal district at that point when it's struck off.
Well, that appraisal district didn't have anything to do with it after it struck off the city.
They would on the valuation of that property though.
He wants to raise the valuation of these properties, which increases the tax liability too.
Right. But, well, but it wouldn't because we own the property that way. So it doesn't matter. But when somebody buys it and they spend $150 for property, you know, their, their investment in that property is $150. They don't really care what happens to it. They're not going to lose anything. And let's say they don't pay the taxes on it. Well, five years from now, the city will get it back again.
Well, the next round is probably going to be about $3,000, $4,000 with the property. There's like six, I thought, saw a list come through today. There are probably five or six properties on there and it totals up about $4,000, which is kind of getting a little better. But I think our best bet on this thing is just when we bring these to council after we take the sealed bids, do that process, if we see a piece of property that's worth more, I think that's our best bet. If we start tinkering with the numbers when you're taking sealed bids on it, I think that's going to mess up the product.
It has to be over four days.
Well, and the appraisal district has laws that they have to follow with. I mean, they reevaluate annually the appraised rates and adjust them. But, you know, to go spot appraise a few properties, I highly doubt if that's legal. But also it increases the tax liability, which makes the property even less valuable because there's a higher tax liability to it at that point.
I'll do some research on it and see if there's anything we can do to try to bring in more money on them. But that so far never has really been the chief goal of this thing. The main thing was to try to get these properties back in the hands of taxpayers.
To take care of.
Because, you know, first time they know the law, they're going to spend more than what they paid for the property. So.
That's it.
My crew, they worked out there on that thing for quite a while. And to get it to this point where it's cleaned up to sell. And, you know, we got it cleaned up. It doesn't look like the jungle anymore. But at that point, it's our property. So we really can't file a lien on it. So that's a dead deal right there.
I don't know. I don't know if I could ask this question. And I don't know if it could be disclosed. But do we know if these, these got bidded out? Are they local people that bid on them?
I don't know. I don't know. Here, but I don't see, is it local?
Yeah. I don't know. This is just, it's not that I'm against it, but I don't understand it. A couple of weeks ago, there was a car driving around looking for lots. And I heard it was a person from California trying to buy a lot.
When you get people buying up property, I mean, we have a lot of owners.
Yeah. I mean, my question is, that person from California is from California and she's in, he or she's going to buy a lot in Littlefield. Do you think she's going to mow it?
No, they don't because they've done this, we've done this before.
Yeah.
Well, if they don't mow it and take care of it, then we'll take it back. It's like we did the house that we tore down.
And I think we need to do that, you know, if, you know, if they don't mow it the first time, I think we need to.
Well, the wording is in there. I don't know exactly where, but the callback is there in case they don't take care of it.
I didn't get a look at the car or the person, but I heard somebody was driving around.
I don't have a feel for the difference between people from California or people from Littlefield, which ones take better care of their property. Because I have people in town that.
And that's true.
The bottom line is we just, if that's the case, we're just going to have to start doing a better job of holding people accountable for their property. Otherwise, we're going to be in a situation that down in downtown and the rest of places. Just do it. Hold them accountable.
Texas, when we adopted this plan a couple of years ago to Texas Community Groups, that's part of what they do is they, they check the list of buyers against their big list to see, make sure these people don't have problems. And then the city checks to make sure they don't have any outstanding liens or anything. So you vet them to the best. But what I remember from the conversation when we met with Danny a few years ago was that, you know, when these people, they legally buy these properties through this auction service and it's a sealed bid because that's the statute. And then if they're the presiding winner, unless you've got good reasons to deny them, there's some. winner, unless you've got good reasons to deny them for some reason, um, you know, then there's, it's kind of hard to pick and choose. If we could deny it on Phelps Avenue, just physical low value in, in the proximity to the courthouse, try to get a better plan.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the sale of these properties, except for seven fifteen Phelps Avenue.
I second.
Where she's been laid by Ben, seconded by Michael, that we approve the sale of all of these properties, except the property of seven fifteen Phelps Avenue, and reject that, that bid on that property. Is there any further discussion? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Next, we will consider an approved selection of the twenty twenty annual sealed coat street coverage, Mitch?
Um, we've just been kind of looking at these streets as we go, and kind of keeping track of the blocks that are, that have the most maintenance issues and stuff, and kind of keeping in mind, it's a really good idea to try to be, uh, with sealed coat, that you, try to get you a pattern going, so that the next time we come around with a sealed coat, we'll kind of know, hey, we follow this pattern. To me, that section there in blue, um, pretty much just east of what we did last year, coming down from Wayland Genes, those first few streets are, are really pretty rough before you get down to Seventeenth Street, probably a lot, lot of water drainage and things like that, but that's the area I would recommend, and Phelps is not too bad yet, but it, I think if we lost it, it would be a huge cost to us to try to, try to repair it, and, um, when you look at it, it's got some, some, some issues that I feel like probably a sealed coat would, would do good to cover. The engineers are saying we could probably get maybe twenty percent more done, uh, but what I would recommend is, is we do Phelps, and then go to the east there, the first block, uh, and then, uh, catch out, uh, Littlefield Drive there, just kind of keep going to the east there, and then just keep going in that direction. Also, uh, the engineers have kind of stepped up, and they've got me some, some folks that can do prime coat on these first-time pavings that we wanted to do last year, keeling, uh, down there, there's one block, uh, on West Eighth Street that goes, uh, out past, and then over on Ninth Street, there's a section there that gets a lot of traffic, um, you can see kind of crosshatched there, uh, just west of Sunset. There's also a couple of intersections, I've had my men over there that are pretty rough, that we're going to have to do something with, uh, could possibly have to do some drainage issues to try to get that water through there, the, you know, water is always the biggest enemy of the pavement, and, uh, over on Third Street, I believe it's Third and, uh, Barton, or, and then over on Waddell, and roughly, there's a bad section, and there could be a couple more around town, but, uh, those are a couple of them that, I think if we fix the drainage issues, we could go in there and, uh, do, you know, possibly hot next thing or something, or maybe even a little bit of concrete to handle the, the drainage, and maybe do some, some fixing. Flat streets got a couple of little areas we're going to have to work on, some to, to handle our drainage, it looks like, uh, you know, I think, once we get a swimming pool, uh, plan and everything, could possibly help some of the drainage there on, on Phelps to, to get some of the water off the, the west side of it, it kind of doesn't cross the road as good as it, I would think it, it should, but, uh, if you handle some of that water to the west, I think it would be good, but just, you know, I, I mean, there's bad streets all over town, but there're like one here, two here, three here, but you really get your best, uh, economy of scale if you try to keep them tight, and that way, the pavers can just keep on rolling, and, uh, but that's what we recommend, and whatever y'all recommend me to do, we can change it, but I really do need to let the, let the engineers know now which streets, so they can do, do the estimation and stuff.
I really would like you to have a look at Phelps Avenue, it's been sealed coated, it was rebuilt fifteen or twenty years ago, um, and it's been sealed coated several times, and it seems to me that it's getting thick, and maybe that's part of our water diversion issue, that's heading a lot more water towards Crescent Park, but not being able to get over the crest of Phelps Avenue, so with the utility patches that they've made a mess of as you get down on the north end, I would, you know, if we can, if we're going to have to rebuild that in several years, um, you know, I'd like them to look at that particularly and see if that money could be better spent, maybe on some more residential streets, if, if that's going to be rebuilt.
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, I think if we get a good patch on those, I think we can put off some really super expensive costs if we, if we lose the street, but I think we still got to, and address those particular drainage spots, then I think we'll be good.
Any other discussion? Mike, can we get a motion approval of the selection of the sealed coat coverage program?
I'll make a motion to accept for twenty twenty annual sealed coat street coverage.
Motion's been made by Michael, seconded by Kenny, that we, um, approve the twenty twenty sealed coat coverage program. Is there any further discussion? If none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, the motion carries. Next, we'll have an executive session, consultation with legal counsel regarding pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offers, and/or on matters as required by the Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct pursuant to Texas Government Code five five one, one oh seven one, Olmsted versus Hock, Grant, et al., case number as follows. Brian, do you want to jump in here? You want me to hand these out?
Yeah, I have to, um, hopefully everyone can hear me okay, but, uh, we're, just to decide, talking to the magistrate, it's an attorney, uh, Crenshaw Dupree, Malam, uh, represents the city in this, in this lawsuit, Ted, we just really want to give a quick update, because don't you need to do, uh, going to executive session, we've received from the magistrate a finding, conclusions and recommendations on pending motions and recommendation of dismissal, and I believe everyone has a copy of that, if not, uh, Captain Neen, she can get you a copy of that, that was filed at the, under District of Texas, uh, real division, um, and that's the magistrate's recommendation to the district court judge, um, to dismiss, uh, and you can read it all, uh, it's thirty-two pages long, um, and so because, uh, as of yesterday is when the, um, the district court judge can rule on this recommendation, the, the district court judge has not, and so, uh, we just wanted to update, shall this, that been filed, and then we'll just put it on a, a future agenda, you know, as, as the judge, uh, that rules on these recommendations.
Is the city of Littlefield a defendant in this cause?
No, sorry, I'm.
Is the city of Littlefield a defendant in this cause, Mr. Warren's question?
Yeah, um, they, they have been, uh, and, and that's addressed in the, uh, in the by the, here by the magistrate.
Uh, what page is that addressed? What page is that addressed?
Uh, I don't know, may run seven C, uh. The reference there, Mr. White, I'm page two, defended the city of Littlefield, the grandfather motion to dismiss, um, of page three.
Well, do you have the original?
It goes through the procedural history, uh, in the matter.
Which, which amendment complaint, or is this, is this pertaining to?
Well, again, that's addressed as well.
So, Tim, were we supposed to be having a discussion on this, Brian, since it's, or you tell, give us the guidance on that, I guess we're supposed to present this information and the findings, or is there a discussion allowed?
No, but, and really, that's, nothing else is needed at this time, there's no action that, that is needed, or even, uh, they're contemplated by the council, just we wanted to give you the update, uh, let you have a copy of this document, uh, and then, break it up at a later date, uh, if when there's further findings in ruling.
Did you say that Crenshaw Dupree and Malam represents the city of Littlefield in this case?
That's correct.
When did the city council approve that representation?
The, the, uh, TML insurance is who hired them.
So they're representing TML, then?
They represent the city, TML hires, they'll offer to represent the city, basic insurance coverage.
Wouldn't the city council have to approve that hiring, based on our charter?
No, it's, that, it's through the insurance process that we have, uh, you've approved the insurance, uh, and that's, and then they hire, uh, that's, that's how it works.
So will the city have to pay for these attorneys, or is that going to be done through the insurance?
Mr. Holmes' question was, was, would the city have to pay these attorneys, or is it done through the insurance?
Uh, the insurance, it's who pays the Crenshaw Dupree, Malam.
And, I mean, Underwood has had to be, be involved in monitoring some of the things, but.
Sure, but the actual litigation expenses, uh, for their Crenshaw Dupree, Malam, it's all paid for the, by the insurance company.
Any other questions for the attorney on this matter, I guess, uh, do we have an expectation on when a final ruling will be made by the court?
I'm not sure, I have to, later that jury.
It was supposed to be yesterday.
Have a rule of procedure, he just said any, any time now, it'd, it'd have to be after yesterday, um, but we really don't have a, especially with everything that's going on, the court's being closed, we don't know when we'll actually get a, a final ruling.
Any other questions? Brian, any other updates for us before we move on in adjournment? If there are no further questions on this matter, we are adjourned.